Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our council workshop for Monday, May 20th, 2024, at 5:30 PM. First order of business is the roll call. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Jacob.
Here.
Mayor Proton.
Present.
Councilmember Kara Fornis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
And Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so this workshop was called to listen to two different proposals from our two lowest bidders, starting out with GFL Environmental.
Doc sent over the presentation in email.
Doc's sent it at 3:00 this morning.
Oh, I'll look for it.
Printout, we got it.
Good evening. Doc's looking for the presentation. I'm Sam.
I'm Kara Magna with GFL. Jeff Gomez with GFL. As you are aware, we've been your provider for the last, I believe, eight years. And we're happy to have submitted a bid for your current solid waste program. We can wait to go through our slide, or if you have questions, we'd be glad to take questions now.
Let's, if you have any info per, while we're waiting for, see if you found the slides, do you have any, anything you want to tell us?
Well, we submitted the bid per your request. We did have a caveat in there regarding the commercial work that was a little change from what you asked for, in the event you were willing to just award that separately. The numbers are in there, you've seen them, I'm sure. But that's, basically, it's the specs that you asked for, and it's the price that we submitted.
Okay. While we're waiting for that, I know there is a question that some people had about recyclable. Opting in, maybe opting out, if it would be a lower price, if it was an option to opt into it. Some people don't recycle. If there's, if there's any, if you could work a price for that, or, you know, if you, if that's an option.
Like a subscription price?
Correct.
Billing the city, or billing the individual homeowners?
Billing the individual homeowners that wanted to opt into recycling.
Now, that wasn't, that wasn't a request of the RFP at the time, and we hadn't put any pricing or thought of a price into that, because you have a pretty strong program here. You've got quite a, quite a robust recycling program. Yes, there's always going to be some that don't participate, we understand that, but our pricing's based on the whole of all of your 11,000 homes.
Sure.
We did have a piece in there for our recycle rewards program, where there's benefits to the residents that recycle. They go online, they get, they register and do their recycle rewards program, and then get, of course, rebates for certain products around town, and they can track their recycling that way.
Okay. It was a question that was brought up, so figured I'd throw it out there to you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Is there any improvements coming down the line? I know in the last couple of years, we've had just a few problems with maybe trash and recyclable being collected by the same truck at the same time, so we, obviously, they weren't getting recycled. We've had problems with trucks leaking fluid for a couple of blocks, and guess if I had to come back out and clean the streets and stuff like that, or days without, without certain streets being picked up. Is that all just due to not high enough staff numbers, which I understand, but I'm just curious, the reasons?
Yes, we, like many others, during that COVID time, that period of, of change that existed a couple of years ago, has really struck hard with a lot of, a lot of haulers, a lot of businesses. We still have not gone, gotten beyond that at this point. Yes, occasionally we'll break a hydraulic line on the street, but we'll recover that and go out and clean that mess up if we need to. If we have a situation where a truck or an operator is collecting two things at once, well, that, we frown on that excessively, so we'll bring that person back in, have a legitimate conversation with them, and if necessary, we'll do a write-up and potentially termination if we find it's a repeat offender. Education is a huge, huge component of what we do, and yet, still, those kind of things slip through once in a while. I don't make any excuses for it. It's a, it's a challenge that we constantly have to deal with.
I know that everybody has a lot of questions about recycling, and you hear, on one hand, that it's a great thing, and we all recycle, I'm a recycler, but then, on the other hand, you hear, oh, hardly any of that ever gets recycled anyway, it just goes in the dump, and we just don't know it, that kind of thing. Is there anything you could shed some light on?
We've got, yeah, absolutely. We've got two, two recycling processing centers. We've got one in New Boston, Michigan, and one in Pontiac, Michigan. Our recycling plant in Pontiac, Michigan, is, is the largest in and around Metro Detroit. It's a beautiful plant, it's, it's relatively new, and it's, it's quite a magnificent piece. If you ever want to go look at it, we'd be glad to take you there and give you a tour. Your recycling goes to either one of those plants.
And it's actually getting recycled?
Absolutely, yes, it is.
I was going to say, that was, I think, the last time we had talked, a little while ago, you had mentioned it was like a $40 million building or a processing plant?
It is. It is. Quite an investment for GFL to put in there, and we certainly wouldn't spend that kind of money on a processing center to not feed volume to that center.
Thank you.
Mayor? Before... Councilmember, Councilmember Earl.
Yes, sir. Obviously, it's been eight years since we've had contracts, so I understand prices are going to go up. Can you kind of go into how, like...
How the gas prices and, and the costs have gone up for you guys, and why it's so much more?
Well, obviously, like we said, as I said a few minutes ago with the, the COVID situation, wages went through the roof. When you had to pay people to get them to come to work, you know, your standard two and a half, three percent increases a year, that was really out the window. We're giving away dollars an hour, a couple of different times, to just attract people to this rugged industry. Equipment, trucks, parts for those trucks, tires, fluids, everything is really went through, when I say went through the roof, went through the roof. So, it's a, it's a difficult thing. We only control, we control fuel, you know, it wasn't long ago, we were paying two, two and a half bucks for fuel, now you're up over four dollars. We have no, no control over that whatsoever, none of the petroleum-based products. So, our work is, is based upon those prices and those numbers. Let's face it, I think you were at an eight-year, flat-price contract here, and, you know, just in that period of time alone, if you look at what a normal increase would have been, you're somewhere north of 30% there alone, just what an annual increase would have been.
Okay. I will say this, obviously, when we negotiated the first contract with Rizzo, which you actually took over, GFL took over, in eight years, and in the last couple of years, because I've dealt with you personally on issues, like Councilmember Kara Fornis has, has mentioned, it's gotten a lot better in the last, I'd say, year, year and a half. You're more, your company is more responsible, they respond quicker, and I haven't heard as, near as many complaints, so...
Well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. We've had a couple of general manager changes. General manager's a person who runs the site where the trucks are dispatched out of. I was that, I was that person at one time, and it's changed hands a couple of times, but we've got a, a manager in there now that, that is overseeing this work, and it's good to hear that things are trending better.
I think they are, but...
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council here? Looks like we got...
I'll let Jeff take, take us through the slide. Go ahead, Jeff.
How are we clicking through this?
Just say next. They're watching.
Next. We can split this up. Next. All right, well, as Sam mentioned, we've went through a few different general managers at our Wayne location that are managing this contract.
Could you speak into the mic?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you...
We've had a few different general managers, you know, that were in, in charge of running the site that manages this contract, and, and as the mayor mentioned, you've seen a noticeable difference over the last few years with, with, you know, the management that's been here, the crews that have been out there. We're going to get into this in a later slide, but improved communications with the, the city and its residents on how to contact us, easier ways to kind of avoid customer service delays in terms of our, our call center, and allow people to submit issues, missed stops, complaints, whatever it might be, via their phone or, or online. Let's go next. Right here, this is a quick image of our, our MRF in New Boston, where most of your recyclables go, between there and our MRF that's in the city of Pontiac. One thing that we wanted to mention here, although you do have a disposal agreement with Woodland Meadows, we're, we're fully enclosed in terms of managing your, your yard waste and your recyclables by owning the compost site where yours goes to Arbor Hills, outside of our landfill, and between our two MRFs. Next. One thing we wanted to mention here was recycling education, and what the city here already has in place, and what we continue to offer in our upcoming bid, is rewards for recycling. And I ran some notes this morning, preparing for today's meeting. In the last 30 days, we've had 679 hits to our rewards for recycling website, 2,000 over the last six months. And what this is, is a, it's a monthly email that goes out to all your residents that have signed up, that's just kind of explaining some seasonality and best practices for recycling. And in doing so, and visiting the website, it automatically generates some, like, local business coupons that they could be using too. But with all the residents that have signed up for it, we do have their emails, and it gives us a good way to communicate, you know, any further issues that we want to see. And if the city was looking to reach out with a mass email blast too, we've done that in the past, if there's service delays due to winter, whatever it might be, holidays, it gives us a good way to communicate with the residents directly. Does anyone have any questions on the rewards for recycling program?
I do. You're already reaching out to residents, like, if there's a service interruption or something, you're already sending out those emails, so that would be at request of us?
Yes, well, yes, we would not do that without, without the city's permission, absolutely. We're just saying, it is, it is a way, another avenue to communicate outside of the recycled info that they receive.
And how many emails do you think you have?
That I'm not sure exactly, but we know that we've, we've gotten hits and movement on over 2,000 in over just the past 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Is that 2,000 in every city that you cover, or 2,000 in Garden City alone?
2,000 is for Garden City.
Okay.
And that could be, you know, multiple times for one user logging in. I can, I can follow up this evening to get you the exact number of how many residence emails we have.
Thank you.
Next. So, what, what Garden City uses here is a cart plus program that we prefer in, in the business, right? It's no longer a two-man crew that's managing your, your solid waste. And this is just an image of the truck that you guys would all see running down your streets here, front-load Corrado that allows us the capability to service the cart, but then also service the cart for anything outside of it. So, following holidays, barbecues, Christmas, if the one cart that the resident is supplied with is not enough, we're prepared to handle that overflow. Also, another benefit to your program is automated recycling service too with the cart. Allows us to run a run-man crew. This is an image of our ASL automated side loader that handles the recycling. This again is just highlighting the, the various MRFs, and kind of reiterating on the concern of where recyclables are going. First of all, it'd be completely frowned upon for us to take any recyclables in the trash, especially since the disposal is handled on the city's side. So, right here, not only do we have the local MRFs in New Boston and Pontiac, we have MRFs in Traverse City, and we have transfer stations in both Flint, Warren, and Royal Oak to move that product if any of our MRFs become burdened with the amount of product that we're bringing in. Next. Please feel free to stop me if I'm moving too fast in here. Our supervisors in the field all have onboard tablets to respond to any live customer service concerns that come in, but also to deal with the GPS tracking of knowing where the trucks are at all times as well. Next. I'm going to get into that more on the following slides. Lytics, this is an onboard camera application that we use that shows a live feed of out-the-front windshield of the truck, and also at the driver. This was originally brought onboard with GFL for, for safety-related issues and, and insurance coverage, but also now it allows us a way of kind of monitoring the driver in a way to go back from recording to see kind of where, where an issue may have laid, right? Obviously, concern for property damage, if a vehicle was struck, or speeding, whatever it may have been, we're able to see that, to see if the driver was distracted, and what he would have seen out the front window. However, it can come into play too with any reports of a concern of a missed stop. Any questions on Lytics? All right, I'm going to get into customer service, we can skip past this, this is just a, an image of our customer service department, and this is what we are excited to talk about today. So, right now, our customer service operating hours are eight to four. However, we wanted to give an option for 24/7 kind of coverage of any customer-related issues. So, gfl.com/support would take you directly to our, our Q Alert customer service application, and allow residents to put in their address, and then follow a series of dropdowns to report the concern that they had. Now, this, this is not just for after-hours, this is for any time of the day. Residents leaving for work, notices that the truck had already come by before they were out, this is how that can be reported, and they would receive, in the following screen here, you'll see that they will receive a quest, a text, or an email, whatever they prefer, saying that that message was received, and then our route manager, who has an onboard tablet in their truck, can relay that message to the driver in the city. So, it's kind of real-time. Once that request is closed out, the resident will receive a response, text message, or email, saying that it was serviced. So, from on your way to work, to when you're at work, before you get home, the entire process could have been handled without even making a phone call.
I, I do have a question on that, because for whatever, for that reason, I, I have been involved, and so has DPW with residents calling and saying they're not getting, they can't even get through to you guys on the phone, which a lot of residents would prefer. To me, that's unacceptable, that, you know, it takes DPW or myself to...
Sure.
...reach out to one of you guys, or, you know, whoever, to get a response for our residents. Is, is, are we getting this addressed?
Well, so, our customer service department consists of 35 CSRs, and they all sit regionally here in Southfield, Michigan, and they only respond to calls for the work that we handle here locally in southeast Michigan. However, there becomes certain times of the year with increased volume, whether it was a billing period, some quarterlies that we have for other communities that we service, where the call lines can be burdened, right? So, we wanted to provide an avenue around that, and we, we understand that that's not the best option for all residents. Some residents want to make that actual phone call and speak with somebody. So, we do have an option for the callback, which we're all familiar with, if you're calling the cable company, whatever it might be. But, you know, these, these support options were put in place to allow residents a second avenue to contact us by, that's a little more streamlined.
So, if a resident calls that number, they're going to get a response?
This is no...
One way or another?
No, this isn't even a call, this is a link, yeah.
But if they call a number for customer service, the, the number you provide?
Yes, yes. So, this, this is, this is a link to the application, them to submit their own complaint. If they were to call our customer service department, like, physical phone call, they, they either are on hold, waiting to speak with a rep, or they can, you know, hit nine to wait for a callback and leave a number for a callback.
Okay. Because I know in the past, they're, they're not getting that, and that's why they're going through DPW and whoever to, to get that answer from you guys.
If, if someone from the DPW, you know, next time they experience that, we, we have ways of looking back on the, on the log to see what, what time and maybe where that issue arose, but we can look into that. Again, we, we are aware of, of, you know, the call volume and the wait times, and this was our, our response to that.
Right. Well, if, if they can get a callback, that's fine.
Yes.
They're, they're not getting any response, and they can't get through, so it's, that's an issue.
Yeah, that, that's definitely an issue.
So, the website's up and running, it works, right?
Absolutely. Yes, this is live today, along with the, the email as well, if that were a request. So, the, the support option is for service-related issues. If someone had an issue that was, you know, in more detail, maybe, or maybe a compliment, I don't know, if I want to sound crazy, but the, the email as well provides, you know, obviously, them to provide a detailed response to whatever may have happened on the streets that day.
What's your SLA on responses?
SLA, meaning that's how long...
Your service level, like, how, how long, yeah, how...
How quickly, next day.
Yeah.
Next day. So, we have dedicated reps that work remote, that are just managing these applications and these responses for the email. It's not, it doesn't call, flood into our 35 customer service reps.
Okay. So, a response is sent within one day, and then what's your remediation process if it is an issue from that one day?
Great question. So, this kind of comes back to the accountability of your route manager, which we also have a dedicated route manager that's just here for Garden City. So, his response time with the GM's review of the daily reports require a 24-hour response to any Q Alert that comes in. So, going back to that same scenario, I'm leaving for work at 7:30 AM, I miss the trash guy, I'm submitting something on the application, that's going directly to the tablet of the route manager. He then has 24-hour window to respond to that. And whether that response is it was out late, or it was put out improperly, or serviced, either way, it requires him to generate a response that will go directly back to the resident's, you know, text or email. So, 24 hours would be the answer. Okay. This here is just a quick image of the application, selecting your address, the dropdowns, it will drop a PIN for where your address is located, just to confirm the address verification, because again, on the, on the supervisor's tablet, he's going to see that PIN drop, and that's what's going to lead him to the address, but then also what will require the response as well. So, it's not just showing up to the, the route manager as an email, or just a message, it's a PIN drop on the map that, and then has a timeframe window of when he has to respond to it. Next. And then, this is the response email, or text message that the resident would receive once submitting that, and once the, the issue has been closed out. This is our GPS tracking that we use, GeoTab. This is kind of shows, you can see the, the squares and the triangles that are listed here on the map. This just shows the, the address that the trucks are in front of, the speed that they're traveling at, and it also allows us history to go back, to track the, kind of a breadcrumb trail of where they are in terms of completion of their route, and where they were throughout any time of the day. If someone were to reach out and ask, you know, on this address, on this block, two weeks ago, we can pull that data, find out the speed of the truck, where angle, what, you know, what direction he was headed at that time.
You can find out what time they were at that address?
Absolutely.
I know in the past, we've had some problems with commercial properties butting up against residential property, and they're not supposed to come till like after 7 o'clock, and then they're there like 4:30 in the morning, and I know our police chief had called several times. Has that been addressed?
So, like, so that would be on our commercial line of business, but absolutely, we have, we have GPS in all of our equipment. Yeah, that would be the route manager. Our, our commercial routes do start earlier, however, we route accordingly to stay away from residential areas throughout certain times of the day.
Thank you.
But we, we do deal with, you know, complaints of that nature, and we are able to see where the truck was at that time to confirm.
Thanks.
Yes. This is just a quick snapshot of our routing application too. So, we, we have every residential parcel address listed within Garden City. We plot those addresses on the map and make a, like a turn-by-turn sequence for our drivers to follow. Ideally, this works with providing some consistency to where they're at on their route, some starting points, so residents start to get used to that, okay, he's here at 7 AM, he's here at 8, or he's here later, by all three lines of business. It allows us to kind of control the traffic flow, to avoid certain areas, schools getting out at certain times, traffic, but also, you know, gives us some service verification, and allows us to kind of track, like, right-hand turns, which is the most efficient way to run the route. Again, just a screenshot of what it looks like, what the driver's map looks like. There's one more image of this, if we flip to the next, there we go. This would be a turn-by-turn map that our drivers are leaving with. You can see the sequence in which he has to run his route with arrows there, if that were zoomed into an 11 by 17 sheet of paper there. Following today too, I understand if anyone's kind of stretching their eyes to see that, I'll send this out to, to everybody that's here too, so we can have a physical copy. Next. No, that is it. Sam and I are happy to take any questions. You know, we, we look forward to staying in the city here. We've been here now for eight years, as it was mentioned. We have a great understanding of the community and of the services, and at this time, happy to take any questions.
Counsel?
I just have one more question, and it may not have anything to do with the bid, because the city doesn't pay for this, but if businesses are interested in getting any recycled dumpster, is that an option that they could pay for themselves?
Yes, absolutely. We've got dumpsters for churches and schools that have office paper, we've got commercial cardboard dumpsters for any business that would like it, and we also offer co-mingled recycling dumpsters for, excuse me, anybody from a restaurant to a bar, to a, a retail store that would like to recycle more, we offer that service as well, and again, we do that because we have to fill that facility of ours with recycling.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, we will listen to a presentation from Titan Environmental Solutions.
Thank you for the time tonight for us to present to you. My name is Jeff Rizzo. This is James Hartley, and we've got John Didoni out in the audience, in case he wants to field some questions as well. I'm going to turn it over to Jim to start, and then I'm going to end with the service.
Good evening, folks. I'm, I'm Jim Hartley. A little bit of background on me, I used to be on the municipal side of things, came around during the fiscal crisis of 2008, brought in the city of Warren, brought in some efficiencies, performance measurement, that's where I discovered Q Alert for a municipal side, and started using it for our performance measurement. Came, came along to the Rizzo team about 11 years ago, and we allowed all that, all that growth to happen. And so, I guess we didn't have the presentation up. Oh, here we go. Very good. You can go to the next slide. So, we've reviewed your RFP, obviously, provided you with the, the basic tenants of what you were requesting, but we also added a few things that we wanted to bring to your attention that we, we might be more, a little bit more capable of doing. Again, I'll get into the performance side, that's mainly where my, my background and experience is. Our team has decades of experience in, as well as in Garden City, with doing your transition back when the contract began before GFL took over. We also have, our technology is outstanding, we utilize the technology, we also manage down on the technology. So, the, a lot of the information that you get from performance-based technology, it's kind of irrelevant if you don't actually use it to manage and make yourself better, and that's where we look at things. And our transparency obligation, we take very seriously, and I'm going to get into a little more detail, and switch to the next slide. So, we found your sustainability plan online, and we, we got in-depth with it. We didn't know to what degree you've actually implemented a lot of these things, but we just wanted to bring to your attention that in addition to basic waste and recycling programs that we would have, we also have a little bit of a, of a specialty in food digestion. The new recycling really is food waste. The state of Michigan's got initiatives now and trying to eliminate or reduce food waste by 25, or 2030 by 50%. We wanted to let you know that as your commercial businesses and maybe city facilities that have, that produce large amounts of, of weight, food waste, the, the nice part about it is it eliminates the food at its source, rather than chucking it to a compost facility and things like that. So, it's just something that we, we just want you to know. Right now, they use them in cruise ships and, and things to eliminate the waste at sea, they also use them in larger facilities throughout the country that, and we're the only manufacturer of, of food digesters in the United States. Next slide. But what we really wanted to get down to is how to save you money and provide, allow you to also provide... also provide recycling services to your residents. You can, we provided you with a sliding scale, you can look at it to whatever degree that you wish. Our per household rate is going to be based on the household, so you're, with an opt-in program, you have the value of knowing who is participating, the volume, what kind of penetration. Are you able to then measure how much recycling, or are you just putting a cart out on everybody's front lawn, and, you know, either they put it out, or they don't. And we all know that participation rates are varying different places. One of the nice things about it is I think it helps with your fiscal responsibility, to not necessarily have a program for people who aren't going to use it anyway. And it allows you, you know, you can look at it from whatever degree that you want. Our experience is that in a place where there hasn't been a high degree of participation, it might be in the 20 to 30 percent range, but you can look at these numbers, and those, that would be your budgetary numbers, and of course, you can put it on your tax rolls and bill it for however it is that you choose to do it. So we wanted to offer that to you as an option, cost-saving option, so that you still have a recycling program for those who wish to participate, and you're not spending money where you don't need to. The other nice thing is that, as I mentioned, we'll be able to provide you with actual numbers on participation. Education programs can be targeted to not only the people who are in, but the people who are out. So in other words, you're going to aggressively market, and we use Recollect, they produce games and opportunities for kids, and different groups that might need to know a little bit more about how to recycle. I think a lot of people are still lost in the wilderness when it comes to what to do with a pizza box, and some of these different things. Did anyone have any questions on this particular thing, or do you want to wait until I'm finished?
I have a question. What do you do with all the food?
It's, it uses microorganisms in a machine, it's about the size of a washing machine, and it literally disintegrates the food to a slushy, watery mass that then goes into the drain, and it's perfectly ecologically sound. So the food, the methane issue, which is obviously the issue with food waste, the methane that's produced at the landfill, it never leaves the source. So if it's a restaurant or a banquet facility, they literally shuffle the food waste into the machine, they use microorganisms, breaks it down, and it goes down into the drain.
Oh, you mean so each facility has that on-site? We don't give it to you?
Yeah, it wouldn't work, obviously, on a curbside, but we just wanted to let you know that we do have an option, and commercial facilities that are interested, we would be offering those options to them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. So our technology, I was the architect of the Q Alert system, the idea of it is full citizen participation. Every stakeholder is involved, whether it's the resident, DPW people, people at City Hall, whoever answers the phone, and of course, our customer service. We use a distributed call center, we, our commitment is to actually hire people from within your community, so it's your neighbor who answers the phone, and we can train them, maybe people who are infirmed, or they have a family member who's infirmed, and they're at home taking care of them, they can be answering our calls, we can be measuring the performance. Everything goes into one system, and what's nice about it is it goes out into the field, it's not so much that you're sending us a message, what are we going to send back to you? And I think that's the question you have to ask with the levels of service that you're accustomed to. Do you get a response? What is the response? And is it a timely response? I think, Mayor, you might have asked, what is the response time? Well, if you designate that a response time needs to be 24 hours, or 48 hours, the system is capable of measuring down to every minute and second. And by us offering you your own version of the Q Alert system, so that every resident has one of these, and is able to report concerns directly, and not wait on hold for 45 minutes, that would be our goal, and that's what we can promise you, and that's our level of using a system in its totality. We're also offering you, and we just made the name up, Garden City Central, you can click on some of the items, and I think there's a QR code on the next slide that allows you to be able to kind of get into more involved in what it will do for you. But the moral of the story is, you're going to be able to not only report issues with solid waste, missed pickups, bulk pickups, special pickups, but you'll also be able to take care of the barking dog, and the broken sidewalk, and any of the other things that the city should so choose to allow residents. And then instead of going to Titan, they would go to your department. What's nice about it is it puts the full control into the hands of the people who run the city, and when people come to a council meeting and say, hey, I've called 15 times, or I waited on hold for 45 minutes, we'll have the numbers for you. You're not going to have to guess, you'll have them at your fingertips, and we're committed to paying for the system, not only for the one, for the part that we use, but the part that you use as well. And the two systems will talk to one another, in a bidirectional format. So the supervisor in the field is able to report, why didn't that get picked up? Maybe there's a good reason, there's a Mayflower moving truck parked in the way, or something. Okay, it takes a picture and sends it back, that way when Mrs. Jones calls and says, they didn't pick up my trash, there's an actual reason why that didn't happen. The system's capable of doing that, and we're willing to offer it to you on your end as well. And of course, I already mentioned about the food digesters, Recoup Technology is the division that handles that within our company. Anybody have any other questions about, I think the next slide, we go into a little more about the performance measurement. This is a copy of the contract that stipulates liquidated damages. I've been in this business now long enough, on both ends of the table, the your side and the side of the waste hauler, to know that we put these things in the contract, but very rarely are we able to trigger them. Okay, so it's going to cost, it's going to cost $200 every time I'm late. How do you know that I'm late, other than someone calls you? We're going to actually give you a system where you will know yourself, your leadership will be able to say, hey, you failed in 24 hours, and if you should so choose to trigger liquidated damages, we welcome that. Our goal is to make it so that in hour 23 and 24, somewhere in there, the bells and whistles and sirens are going off, and we're going to make sure that that doesn't happen. Because number one, it's going to cost us money, and number two, it's going to jeopardize our relationship with you. So we have a mechanism in place, I only put it here because liquidated damages are very often put in contracts, but they're very rarely looked at. And more importantly, we're the only company that can offer you the ability to yourself-measure what we really did, and not just find out about it six months later, or a month later, when somebody submits a report. That's kind of the gist of it. Next slide, please. These are some of your neighboring communities, I personally was involved in setting them up. City of Warren has been there for 16 years, some, these are some of the areas where it either has or hasn't improved that level of communication. Now, of course, what happens on the hauler side is not something that I can answer for, but these are communities that use the system, and we're looking to pay for you to have it, if you should so choose, so that our relationship is made better. Our dirty little secret is, it improves our relationship, and we're willing to pay for it, so you have it, and it's something that you can trophy as elected officials, that you're giving this to your residents, so they can report any kind of issue.
I have a quick question on that.
Sure.
So 24 hours, so you, let's say my garbage day is Thursday, and you miss it, you have 24 hours to get it, or you're going to pay a fine, so at 3:00 in the morning, if you realize you missed five streets, are you going to send a truck down my street, waking everybody up?
Well, what's going to happen is at 10:30 in the morning, when the message comes through to us, and again, people can report it on a smartphone, they can call in the old-fashioned way, or they can put it online, that comes in, now the meter starts ticking. We've got 24 hours from the time the call came in. Now, if it came in at 3:00 in the morning, we have a, and now, really, more than a day to handle that. What our best practice would be is that it comes in, we handle it the same day, the supervisor in the field sees it, responds to it, or tells you why they couldn't respond to it, in real time. So now it comes back to your administration that handles the affairs of the city, and they're answering for it at that point. But if it goes over, there's an alert, there's an alert that's sent to you, and it's sent to us. Now again, we're going to be dealing it at hour 20, not at hour 24, because we want to make sure it goes up the rung of the ladder to whoever's responsible. And then ultimately, city management is going to get alerted at a certain point. This technology is capable of doing that, and we're offering it to you. And it will measure that timetable over a course of period of time. So you have, that's a guarantee that you're going to get the performance that we're telling you verbally, that we're committed to. Any other questions about the app or anything? Okay, next slide, please. And this is, this would be the custom branded app, you can scan that with your phone, go to, there's a, we have a site set up, just to kind of show you the interactive. We made all this up, this isn't anything that you would have to choose to do, but it's here as an example of something, it would be custom branded, it would also allow you to do other things on the app, alert you to different things that are going on in the community, have links to pay bills, and all kinds of different things. But it's something that we're going to offer you, will then be yours to do whatever you choose to do with, we will pay the bill throughout the duration of the contract with you. And again, it puts the power in the hands of the resident, so if you inform people of things, they're not going to be calling you, and we feel the same way from a customer service perspective, they're not going to be calling us either, because we're going to handle it before it becomes the squeaky wheel, I guess you could say. Next slide, and here's just some more information on it, basically, and again, you can scan that information, and go take a look at the little site we set up for you. Next slide, please. Jeff?
Yep. So we know how important services and price, so we based our pricing on, you know, obviously providing you guys with the best service we possibly can offer, and what's important to us is, you know, unless you tell us otherwise, our goal is to go into the city and pick up everything, every, all the trash that's outside, even in the containers, we're going to take everything. We're not going to argue with the residents, we don't want to say, hey, you know, this was X amount too big, or too small, or whatever it is. Our goal is, you're paying us to do a service, we're going to provide that service by just taking everything, because we measure ourselves based on the calls you receive. We don't want you to get any calls. And quite frankly, going back to, you had a really good question about 3:00 a.m., our goal is to take care of that issue that comes in, that same day. We will, we do have 24 hours, seven days a week, customer service, whether they can call in, or they can use the Q Alert system. Our goal is, the way that we set this up was to, you know, basically, we categorize any items that come in, let's say it's a late stop, or a missed pickup, whatever it is, we categorize it as a late stop slash missed pickup. We don't want our people to argue with the residents, we don't want you guys to get phone calls, and that's why, you know, our goal is to just take everything that's there, if it's an issue that came up the day prior, let's get our guys back out there and just take care of it. Because again, you're paying us for a service to do that service, and not to leave certain items out, or whatever that is, you know, again, our job is to do what we have to do and take everything. I mean, that's just our philosophy. We say yes when others say no. You know, I was fortunate enough to start this city eight years ago, you know, I worked very closely with Don Beretta, who also, I believe, is still with the company today. Him and I saw, we had the same views, we looked at things the same way, and I know that, you know, again, if we were fortunate enough to have this opportunity, again, our goal is to over-service, meaning I would come in with more trucks than with the contract, the way we bid the contract. So for instance, if we bid the contract with a certain amount of trucks, I always like to start the contract for the first three weeks with an extra truck or two, because I want to be off your streets, and, you know, out of your hair by 4:00 or sooner. That's the goal. We don't want to be onsite before 7:00 a.m., we want to be very mindful of the buses, if it's not in the summer, of the kids getting on the buses, we want to try to be careful about how we route. It's important to us, safety, service, and pride are three top things that we look All our trucks are equipped with GPS and camera, so if there is an issue or a concern, all the trucks will have devices that they can actually take a picture if there is an issue, kind of going back to what Jim said. But the one thing I really do like about the Q Alert system is, not only are you seeing the calls come through, and our customer service is making notes, and the supervisor is making notes, you guys see, you see the, all the calls that come in, you see how we actually handle them. Without, you know, phone calls having to be traded back and forth, you actually see a call come in, you see how it's resolved, and that basically was, you know, was taken care of, and we move forward without having to pick up the phone. So again, my biggest thing is service, that's what I'm good at, that's what I specialize in. I don't believe in 24 hours, I believe in immediate. So that's how I've always done things, but I guess if there's any questions, that's my spiel.
Go ahead. Councilmember Squires.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. So if I'm hearing you correctly, there's no, you don't have to call for a special pickup if somebody leaves a couch out there?
We're going to take it.
You're going to take it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I know you guys are kind of, from listening to DPW, they said you're kind of new coming in, and I guess my question is, your availability for the vehicles, the trucks, the cans, are you set up in Michigan right now, full, fully ready to go? You know, those would be the basic ones that I have.
All good questions. We're actually, you know, we have two locations here in Michigan, we aren't in any other states at this time, so yet the trucks, we already have the trucks, we're already prepared to go. We've got a location in Troy, and we have a location in Detroit.
Okay, so are the trucks here then?
Yes.
And the cans are all here?
The cans aren't here yet, we didn't order the cans yet, because we weren't sure if we were going to have the, you know, obviously be awarded, but it's not, as long as I have enough notice on it, if like, for instance, if we were awarded within the next week, I can make some phone calls, and we can get the cards in place quickly.
Okay, and then the other question I had...
We can make it a smooth transition with the other hauler as well.
Okay, and then my other question, on the QR code, I know we have a Nixle system that we send out alerts to, how would, would they have to sign up with you? Because we don't have every resident in the city signed up on our Nixle, let alone signing up for this QR code.
It'd be the same idea, but one of the nice things about this system is that I don't believe that anybody signs up for something to do one thing. I think people download an app and sign up because they want to do multiple things, whether it's to find out when there's different programs, or what have you, or to make a complaint to the city, or knowledge base is another reason that people, you know, I just want to find out how to handle a certain situation. I might not even need to call anybody, I just need to know, the system has it built in. So it works similar to the Nixle system, in that you ultimately would have to interact with the system once, in order for you to set up an account and be part of it. But once you do that, you'll receive all the alerts pertaining to your request. I should mention, this is, doesn't use crowdsourcing or any of that obnoxious stuff, where like some, somebody reports something, and suddenly, everybody in the neighborhood gets to see it and comment on it, none of that. It's all private between the city and the resident, and the hauler, in our case.
I think the question is, if you don't mind me speaking on your behalf, is I think they, is it, can they set it up anyway, can they tell us if they want it set up a certain way, are we able to do that?
Yeah.
Under their direction?
I mean, we ultimately have to get their phone number, or their email, in order to communicate with them, similar to the Nixle system.
Okay.
And we could, we could do a data transfer, so that anybody who's been involved in either-or, we can share that information, with, you know, then send out alerts. Should also be mentioned, if there's an emergency, a road closure, a bridge out, a snow emergency, the Q Alert system has the ability to do a very quick notification of the system, so everybody would know that there's a service interruption for whatever the reason is in a particular situation. It has the ability to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lynch.
Do you have contracts with, currently, around the area?
Currently, we don't, you know, we don't, we have the experience, obviously, but we aren't currently servicing anybody, any other residential contracts in the area. We're big on them, we're just not-
Are you doing commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it's actually kinda funny, we're actually, are you guys familiar with Standard Waste? The company Standard Waste? It's a commercial business?
That's right.
We actually are acquiring them, closing on them tomorrow. So it's gonna be more equipment, and more trucks, and more stability.
Where are you doing commercial at?
We're doing, and basically, in the metro Detroit area. I mean, we're going as far as, as far actually, trying to think of, we go as far as Howell. You know, basically, we're in about a three-hour, four-hour radius of where we're currently at now. If that answers it. Yeah, no problem.
Mayor, I just have one more question. Just confirming, you said that if for some reason we chose to opt out of recycling, individual homes could opt in, right? And they would just be built separately?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I believe the treasurer was looking at those things when we-
Were you referring, like, to new homes, like, new ownership?
No, like, say the city decides not to do recycling on this contract, we just say, we're not gonna do recycling. I, as a resident, could call and say, I want to do recycling.
That's right.
Absolutely.
It's an opt-in, not an opt-out.
That's what I was gonna say.
Sorry, misunderstood.
And again, we'll do the outreach for you, we'll try to get as much, you know, as much as you want, the engagement. And then what's nice about it is, we can communicate directly with the people who opt in, because when they opt in, it'll be similar to like the NICSO question. Now we know who they are, we know where they live, we know how to communicate with them in a modern era. So there would be a great engagement there.
And if you guys, if you did decide to do the opt-in program, we would actually, we would make it easier for you, and we would go out and basically inventory who we feel, you know, the residents that are doing the opt-in, and we can start, basically, okay, we've got, we came up with, let's say, approximately 20%. We can start them with the opt-in, as long as they're agreed, are able to pay in that rate. No problem.
Okay.
Mayor? Mayor Proton Dole.
But you would still be charging the city for that, correct?
You're not going to charge the individual homeowners for their curbside recycling. That's still going to go through the city contract, it'll be based on percentage of homes used.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor? Any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Witt.
So, you were talking about the Q Alert system, and you said you would cover it for the length of the contract, the first one. What roughly do you expect the cost for, if we were to opt in and use that system, would it be in the future for future contracts?
Well, if you went out to RFP just for a municipal CRM, which is what that is, it would probably cost you about $30,000 a year. I don't know, I'd have to look at the numbers for the size of your community. We're obviously gonna pick up the cost of that. So at the end of the contract, if you, if it was of value to you, and you chose to go with a different hauler, then obviously you'd probably be wanting to pick up the tab on that, or you'd let it go. That would be a two. But roughly, it's about $30,000 that doesn't have to come out of your general fund, because we'll be funding it for you, as part of our relationship.
So just, if the relationship stays, it's covered by Titan?
Absolutely.
Okay. The other question that I have is, with the current, if you were to be awarded the contract, you said you were having to order new cans. Obviously, our houses have cans that are branded with city logos. Is that something that would be offered, or are you able to use the current cans? I'm not 100% sure of the previous contract, or if that's owned by GFL, like those cans, and those will be picked up by them, so?
No, I mean, anything that's branded by the city, we would prefer to keep that, because if that's what you guys want, we can continue to work with that. If it's, if there's some containers that are out there that are branded by the current hauler, I would be willing to try to see if that's something like a, because I don't want, obviously, any of the residents to suffer, I would try to negotiate to where, maybe we can leave those onsite, maybe we can even buy them from the, we've done that in the past, from the current hauler, or we can just do a swap, you know, but we don't want, we don't want anybody to suffer, basically, any of the residents. So we're open to any suggestions you guys have.
And your city logo, whatever it is you want on it, we'll be honored. One of the things that we like to add is a QR code burned into the can, that a resident can walk up anytime, scan with their, you know, because everybody's gonna lose that piece of paper that you put on the refrigerator, right? Whether it's recycling, or other hazardous waste and things. What we like to do, because then we can maintain a website with you that can change over the years, if different ordinances change and things, that'll all be reflected. And all they have to do is walk out and scan their can, the hauler's gonna know where the can is. It costs us a few more dollars, but it's something worth having.
That'd be something similar to, I know GFL right now has a number, the cans are all numbered, so we can track. So the QR would replace that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions, council? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Okay, now, we have public comment for non-agenda items only. This will be brought up in our regular council meeting, so if anyone has-
Mayor? I just have a question. With the public comment for non-agenda items, this is a workshop for the garbage. I mean, I would like to hear just for this.
Okay. But then you might hear it again at the next one.
I don't care.
Okay. Okay. Comments from the public?
My question is about the recycling program. Right now, I've heard that, I've heard a number around $800,000 for this. My question is, would we be better off removing curbside recycling and go back to the dumpsters that we had set up on Beechwood? Why I'm suggesting this, from the research and stuff we've had, this recycling program, we gathered in the trucks, and there's many times it goes to the facility, they're cross-contaminated, so it ends up going right into a septic place of where it's filling up our landfills. So would we be better off going to these dumpsters, because we'll control it, we'll actually have the product, you know, go in there, we'll have it properly recycled, until they fix their problem? And Jay Lee, you and Randy went to a recycling place three or four years ago, I think? And wasn't that one of the problems, that they had recyclables coming in, but they couldn't do anything because they got contaminated? So would it be best to take a step back for a couple of years, and let the system improve itself, and then we go back to it? I mean, it's a suggestion, $800,000 is a lot of money right now, and not every citizen uses the recycling, so is it really worth that kinda money? And the other question I have is, do these contractors pay a national prevailing wage for their employees? We do have prevailing wage now in the state of Michigan, so how are you going to address that cost?
Okay, thank you. I will say this about the dumpsters. When we had them, DPW had a real issue with, people would drop off tires, they would drop off all kinds of stuff. We'd spend many, our DPW would spend many hours going through the dumpsters, or we had to have one person sit there all day, every day, to watch the garbage coming in. So, at that time, we didn't think it was cost-efficient to do that. It might be something we can look at, but based on what we had, the issues, and there were a lot of issues talking with DPW, that that's why we got away from having the dumpsters over there by DPW.
Isn't that the purpose of this meeting, to create conversation?
Yeah.
So we can look at all the different options.
Right, and that's an option, I'm just-
My concern is, is that recycling is not as efficient as we had hoped. In this case, something straight, EPA was developed in 1970, folks. Are we really taking care of our land in our country?
Thank you.
I think Mr. Murray might have came in a little bit late, and maybe he can review the meeting. We did ask those questions to the first presentation about what they're doing to make recycling more, more efficient for everybody. So they were talking about the new plants that they got. So things have changed a little bit since we had the dumpsters at Moeller.
Is some of ours already patient, too?
I agree, but there was a lot of talk about recycling at the beginning.
Okay.
Okay.
Five thirds are-
I just wanted an explanation, if we can get it, on how the rates were approved before you've accepted a contract. And the rates are increasing quite a bit, and you don't have a contract yet, so you haven't decided if you're gonna use recycling, or if you need to trim the package. So you have a 62% increase for a single-family home, a 67% increase for commercial and industrial, and 85% increase per apartment unit. And then a duplex and apartment building, I think, was in the 62% increase, too. So can you explain what is, what is the apartment unit fee versus an apartment building? And those are quite large increases, so I hope you're gonna look at the packages carefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The rates that were, they weren't really approved, the treasurer, based on what the two lowest bids were, is some of the numbers that he put out. Obviously, the contracts aren't approved. The increases are based on what the two contract, lowest contracts came in at. The apartments, I don't know how they did that, but the rate increases are just based on what the contracts were that they put in, their bids. Any other questions?
If you don't know why the increase is different, shouldn't you have asked these contractors when you got the bid? You've had it for over two months now, you could have said, could you please explain this to us, why this is so much more than the other? I mean, for apartments and residential, that's not right. I mean, there should be more public hearings to get the input from all of us. We just hear a certain part of this, and it's not fair to us, because you get the voting right, and then we're stuck with whatever, whatever you give us. And the people need to have more input for a longer amount of time, because you're supposed to be voting on this. And just to put that amount, the increase in there, not really knowing what contract you're going to, that's wrong. That's like, well, we're gonna go ahead and screw the public again. And frankly, I'm getting tired of being screwed.
Thank you. We haven't had this, that I know, for two months.
Yeah, you did have this-
Okay.
March 4th.
Did we? Anyways, the bid, the bid is what they put in. So, if they're raising their rates 100%, that's up to them. It's up to us to pick the lowest bidder, responsible bidder that we choose, and we're representing you.
No, we're not.
I'm not? Okay. Oh, there's six others up here that are, so. Any other comments? Okay.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Sure.
I think one of the comments from this level was about approving that. So at the last meeting, it was the fee schedule that got approved, and the only thing on the fee schedule that went up was the garbage rates, but we didn't have a bid yet. Like, she just said we've had this March 4th, whatever, we just got this, last Thursday. But we voted on it a week ago. So, if you just got this this week, you voted on something two weeks ago that you didn't even see. So I don't understand that process, and I think that's what she was asking us, why did we do it like that?
The timeframe for bringing the contract forward is, I didn't have this at March 4th.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we, as a council, just got this on Thursday.
Right.
But we've had it since March 4th, and we approved an increase in price two weeks ago at a meeting when we didn't even have this. So I don't understand why, how that works.
I believe Mr. Marsiniak said that they were putting that A number in as a placeholder, and if that is not the correct number, it would be changed after we-
So we can, we can change it with whatever bid that we choose.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Squares.
Also, our rate has not gone up in the last eight years from our current hauler, so, garbage hauler. So eight years is a long time to go without an increase. And we are residents, too. All of us that sit on the board here are Garden City residents. We're not happy with it either. But we don't, we have to have our garbage taken care of. That's it.
The only other comment I'll have is, to piggyback off that, eight years, we can go back to gas, you can go to groceries, you can go to anything you want, after eight years of absolutely no rate increases, it's gonna go up. And everything's gone up sky-high. That's just what they call, we took the two lowest bids, if they both went up 100%, that's the bid that's come, those are the bids that are coming in. Again, I'm not real thrilled with it, but the only other option that I see is, we should have been raising our fees for the last eight years when they, we weren't being charged more, which to me doesn't make sense, that would have been cheating the residents. So, the price we got, the bids we have, that's the bids we're gonna have to deal with and look at, and see where we're at with them.
Mayor, Mr. Miller said earlier that, on average, with the price increase, it would be about $190 a year per resident, and if you divide that up by, it's like, you know, $16 a month increase.
Okay.
Total.
Total. Right.
Further comments? Okay, no further comments, the workshop is adjourned. We'll be back at 7:00.